Test, test one, two. Good evening, welcome to the Revere Zoning Board of Appeals. Could I ask everyone to rise and salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It is in the Constitution that we shall stand one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of the members of the zoning board of appeals, Mr. Hamdan. Here, Mr. Lemina. Here, Mr. Lopes. Here, Mr. Pelton. Here, Mr. O'Brien. Here, and Chairman Tucker.
Here.
Here, Quorum is present. First item on tonight's agenda is application A 2215 Nixon Jimenez, 114 Augustus Street, seeking a couple of variances to convert a single-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling on proposed Lot A and construct a new residential structure on proposed Lot B. Please be advised, members, that the counsel for the applicant did submit a request to withdraw this application without prejudice.
There's a motion to withdraw without prejudice. Let's see. I'd ask for a second. Second, roll call, please.
Shall the zoning board of appeals allow the petitioner to withdraw the application without prejudice? Mr. Hamdan.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lemina? Yes, Mr. Lopes? Yes, Mr. Pelton? Yes, and Chairman Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, the application will be withdrawn. Next item is A 2222 Zapaj Development LLC, 78 Mill Street Middleton, requesting several variances to allow the applicant to raise the existing structure and construct a four-story, 25-unit residential structure at 344 Salem Street.
Is there anyone in the audience for this? Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Nancy O'Neil. I am an attorney at 14 Proctor Avenue, Revere, Mass. I am here on behalf of the applicant, Zapaj Development LLC. This project was first presented at the zoning board of appeals meeting on August 24th, 2022. Since that time, we held a community meeting on September 8th. Our project architect and engineer are currently in the process of revising the project plans in response to the concerns of the neighbors at our September 8th community meeting. And for this reason, we would ask for a continuance so that we may submit our revised plans. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing that this is a public hearing, I would still ask if there's any proponents? Seeing and hearing, and I'll close that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents? Those of you who already spoke last month, you're already on record, so there's no need for you to get back up, but Ward Counselor, you're welcome to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I would like to clear something up. At the last CBA meeting, I was at work and I wasn't able to get here in time for 5:00, so I was unable to attend. However, I had expressed to the chairman that at the time, I was under the impression that the abutters on Clifton Street were in support. So, we had an initial community meeting earlier in the summer, and he had presented plans for 30 units. He dropped, subsequently, the applicant dropped the plans from 30 to 25, and I was under the impression that the people on Clifton Street who directly abutted were in support. Clearly, that was not the case. So, had I have been here, I would have corrected that record, and as such, I am opposed even as it currently stands with the seven variances. We have had a subsequent neighborhood meeting. The residents have made clear that they really, you know, that property has been a mechanic shop, a gas station. It has been commercial business for, you know, the last 50 years or so. The residents have requested a desire to keep it, to some degree, to a business, not large-scale apartments. Their concerns, yes, there were concerns about parking, but the concerns extended beyond parking. The concerns extended to the size of the building, the question of can he, can, can they build so close to the wetland, the creek that runs behind there? So mainly the scale, obviously parking, but just the overall, the overall apartment building style, the residents, the neighbors, did not want to see. And when I ran for office, I promised myself that I would stand by my residents, and as such, I am here in opposition. So I would ask, not only that you not continue, but that you deny the continuance and ask that they withdraw without prejudice, to come back with something that's a bit more, not only more palatable, but more acceptable to the residents there. So, thank you.
Okay, is there anyone as an opposition that would like to get up and speak that hasn't spoken before? And if you could press the button and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, gentlemen, my name is John Oaks. I live at 22 Clifton Street. The business neighborhood, our neighborhood business as it's owned, is for residential homes and businesses that conduct business that's beneficial for the residents, such as a store, doctor's office, or lawyer's offices, not a big apartment building. The wetlands, the creek that runs behind, the garage that's there now, is part of the Pines River that runs down to Rumney Marsh and Diamond Creek Marsh. It feeds into those things, and it's protected. When I spoke to the gentleman at the Department of Environmental Protection, he said that the rule is that they cannot build within 100 feet of protected wetland. So, the variance also states that he wants to build a building that size, and your rules say that you cannot take up more than 40% of the land with the building. And then we have the other setbacks that aren't that bad, but the parking is terrible around there. It took us years to get them to stop parking there, to take the buses into Haymarket, because the bus stop is right on Lincoln Street. So, those are the concerns that we have as a neighborhood. I mean, we own, we're single-family houses, except for one two-family house, and we're all owner-occupied. We don't have rental units. Our neighborhood is very nice. I mean, you go out any day, you see people out there sweeping in front of their house in the street. In the summer, in the wintertime, Jamie plowed the snow, because being half Sarkis and half Revere, we have a problem getting it plowed. Jamie's been, was kind enough, almost winters, to plow up and down the street and widen it for us. And Gary's automotive was there before, was the same way. He took care of the property, and he took care of the neighbors. So, I'm hoping you people will vote down the variances and end this, so we can have a nice, quiet neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents?
Hi, my name is Robin Vasquez. I live at 21 Clifton Street, Revere. I'm actually one that butts the property. And all I want to say was, we did have a neighborhood meeting with him, but he came back with the same plans. And I have a list here. I don't know if you want to see it or look at it. Of all the neighbors in the area.
Just submitted the last time?
No.
No. Anyone else like to look at a?
That's all I had to say.
Okay, thank you. May we keep that for the record? If you can bring a-
Can you come down to my office and ask the question? Thank you.
At the community meeting, we did present the same plans as before, because we were going to update our plans in response to the community meeting, so we are updating the plans. But at the community meeting, it was correct, we did have the same plans, but we're in the process of updating them now. Thank you.
Okay, there is currently a request, a motion to continue. Is there a second on the motion? There's a second. I would ask for a roll call for continuance.
Shall the zoning board of appeals allow the applicant to continue this matter to the October 22nd meeting of the zoning board of appeals? Mr. Hamdan. Yes, Mr. Lemina? No, Mr. Lopes? Yes, Mr. Pelton? Yes, and Chairman Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, this matter will be continued to the meeting of October 26th.
We don't understand why.
They're offering substantial changes. There was a concern over parking. If they address that concern over the parking, then it's something that should be heard. If you're still against it, you still have the right to come up and oppose it.
They can harass the neighbors, they can harass the neighbors.
And you can go to your ward counselor and deal with that. If there, if there's anything else. You're commenting harassment, that has nothing to do with the board of appeals here.
I don't know why they grant continuance, it's not fair to us.
We grant continuance, is it, is just a, if they ask for a continuance and they're coming forth with new plans, that's normally what we do. We offer them. They are coming forth with new plans, they have stated that.
That's not fair, we're doing that time, they have chosen it.
This is, the motion to continue was granted, as you can see, so.
What would be the reason at this point? They say yes or no, but they don't say the reason why.
They're offering changes to the plan.
But they have it. They have it.
Okay, this is not a discussion. The motion to continue is granted. The next meeting will be October 26th.
Next application on the agenda is A 2224 Jenny Alejandra Alvarez, 20 Martin Street, seeking the following variances from the zoning board of appeals to enable the appellant to validate an existing gazebo structure at 20 Martin Street. They're looking for required side yard for lots less than 6,000 square feet in the RB District, and with respect to no accessory structure, shall be more than 10% of the rear
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for your time. My name is Jenny Alvarez, and I'm the owner of 20 Martin Street. So, as Ashley stated, I'm requesting a variance to keep the gazebo at its current structure. I had hired someone to do it, I know it's, I'm not sure if it's relevant or not, to do this work. Unfortunately, they didn't, they didn't get the permit. I learned the hard way. However, even I, me and my husband were planning to do an entrance to the backyard from the deck, and if we were to redo the gazebo, we wouldn't have enough space to be able to build that, those stairs to enter the back, it wouldn't be enough space. I took a clearer picture today, if you guys wanted to see clearer.
Okay, seeing that this is a public hearing, I would ask if there's any other proponents? Anyone in favor? Hearing and seeing, and I'll close that side of the hearing. Is there anyone opposed? Hearing and seeing, and I'll close that side of the hearing. Who's the ward counselor for this area?
There would be a council called Leonard.
Have you spoken to the ward counselor in your area?
As I, I called and left a voicemail. I didn't get a call back.
Do any of the members wish to speak?
I actually went by there today to look around. Nice property, well-maintained, beautiful gazebo. I don't see any issues with it myself.
For the record, we had no one send anything on it. I haven't received any phone calls, so there's been nothing. The ward counselor hasn't called or any other. I would ask her a motion to approve. Second.
Shall the zoning board of appeals grant the variances requested for 20 Martin Street? Mr. Hamdan?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lemina?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, and Chairman Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, the variances have been granted.
Thank you so much, gentlemen.
Don't do anything until you get a lot of phone calls.
You got it. Thank you so much, gentlemen.
Next application is A 2225 Herbie Jean Baptiste, 321 Proctor Avenue, seeking variances, seeking a variance of no parking in the rear yard to enable the appellant to establish a driveway entrance on Burbank Street and provide two additional off-street parking spaces in the rear yard for 321 Proctor Ave.
If the applicant or their representative is present, please step up to the microphone, press the button, and state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, my name is Herbie Jean Baptiste. Thank you for here tonight, like I know, to hear my case. My name is Herbie Jean Baptiste. I live at 321 Proctor Avenue. I live with my wife and my two sons. I live at that address since 2003. I'm here today to request a variance from the regulation prohibiting me from parking vehicles behind my house. I need to do this for several reasons. This include, number one, the need to access vehicle in case of emergency. Number two, having sufficient space so that there is a space to park cars that belong to my wife and to my grown son who live with me as well as my own car. Number three, there is no dedicated on-street parking in the front of my house. Not only that, there is a carrot now, there is a sticker that you have to have, so you can park your car on the street. Number four, without a driveway to the area of my house, I'm also unable to have access to the backyard to my personal purpose. Finally, granting the variance will not cause any harm to the public good. All that I'm requesting is the ability to access the rear of my own property and use it for the same purpose as all there in the neighborhood. Currently, many property owners in the area park vehicles in the rear of their houses and are able to use the backyard for their property. Thank you very much. I wish that kind of you guys can accept my application, so we can grant it, like kind of the permit, so I can continue to do the project.
Okay, seeing that this is a public hearing, I will have to ask if there's any other proponents? Anyone in favor? Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Zubi Barbosa. I live at 322 Proctor Avenue, across the street. I'm totally in favor for my neighbor, not just for the reason that I also have parking in the back and the rear for eight cars plus three in the front, but I, I don't see what the situation would damage anything on the neighbors, on any other property. And I say, I can tell how convenient it is to have a park in the back for many purposes, for my kids, for the space, for snow purpose, it is just convenient. So, I'm totally against and favor my neighbor.
Thank you.
I've been living there since 2007, so we know each other for 15 years, and I totally-
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else? Anyone else is a proponent? Seeing and hearing, and I'll close that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents? Anyone opposed? Please state your name and address for the record.
How you doing? My name is Frank D'Amelio. I live at 48 Burbank Street. I oppose this driveway. If any of yous have driven down Burbank Street, it's a very dangerous hill. Coming down that, making that turn down, it's very blind coming up and over the hill. So, one, it's going to be dangerous to the pedestrians walking down the hill and the cars coming out. Also, this gentleman has done work in the past. I have pitches. He's left chunks of concrete out on the side. The street was just done last year. This, it's stained with all concrete water from his contractors. I also have people in the neighborhood that oppose, that couldn't make it tonight. I have their emails, they sent me emails. And also, there is another lady here with me that lives on the street also.
Your records for opposition, I'd ask that you present them to the city clerk?
Okay.
If you have them with you?
No, I have them in, I have them in an email.
They'd have to be in paper format, in order for us to receive them. Okay, so, is there anyone else that is opposed? Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Ruth McGuire, 47 Burbank Street. I've lived there for over 30 years, and when you're coming up Rock Proctor Avenue and taking a right on to Burbank Street, it's a blind corner. You have to stop, you have to look down before you can drive down to see if any other cars are coming up. Also, in the wintertime, it's very treacherous, it's very icy. I've been there, and there's been many an accident, so I oppose to this. And then when the person is going to go into that driveway, he's going to have to go over to the left side of the road in order to turn into his driveway that he wants to go into. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other opponents? Seeing and hearing, and I'll close that side of the hearing. Are there any members that wish to speak?
Can we wait till they, they gave us the pictures and everything, so we can look at it, what he's talking about? They want, he's opposing. You know, he just, it's in there? No, no, he said he have pictures and emails from the neighbors.
Oh, I have, yeah.
Yeah. You want to present them first, or?
They have to be filed with the city clerk, but then, before our meeting.
Yes.
Yeah. Unfortunately, we can't do that, because it's, you have to file stuff five days in advance.
Take a ride by there.
I was by there today. 48, where's 48? Is it before the stop sign, or?
Right at the bar, before Lincoln and Burbank.
You're in Burbank at the very bottom.
Yeah.
So, how would his driveway affect you if you're at the bottom of Burbank?
Because I have young kids that are out there playing, that hill's all very dangerous.
All right, you have to come up to the microphone if he's asking you a question, please.
I have kids that are out there playing, that hill's dangerous as is. Now, we're going to add a driveway into it that's going to make it more dangerous. Cars coming in and out, cars coming down the hill. Also, like my neighbor said, it's very icy in the winter. That hill is number one problem in the winter. I work for the city, I'm there salting it every time I can, just because I know how dangerous it is. Now, if we add a driveway, we're just making it more dangerous.
Okay. His, his house is almost at the bottom of the hill.
My house is.
His house.
His house is in the middle.
It's almost at the bottom. I was there today. It's almost at the bottom.
It's not at the bottom, sir. It's right when you come down the hill.
I'm not saying it's at the bottom, I'm saying it's almost at the bottom
Okay.
of Burbank.
Yeah.
Me driving by there today. Now, anybody making a turn from Proctor to Burbank would have the same issue.
That's what I'm saying.
Right?
Coming down.
But you can't, but you can't stop people from taking a right there regardless.
I don't want anyone to start taking a right there.
Right, so it's just as dangerous, is what I'm saying, it's just as dangerous if you were on Proctor and you took a right on Burbank, it would be the same issue.
Yeah, it is, it would be.
It would be.
But it would make it even more dangerous with cars coming in and out of there. Also, their work is not up to par. I mean, I, I mean, I got-
No, I was by there.
I've been calling Paddle Keef about it, there's been garbage up and down Burbank Street, their house, the other house, I mean.
That's the building inspector's issue, that's the bar issue.
Just letting you know, you know? Standard of work is not-
I have a question for the homeowner. You have a driveway on the right-hand side, right?
Yes.
Now, why wouldn't you put a driveway on the left-hand side?
The, on the left-hand side, the driveway, it's for an emergency. Currently now, we have four cars, and then our driveway can only use for two cars. If we have like kind of visitor, we don't have people like kind of to come. I'm not requesting that to be parked there. It's just like kind of to have access in the backyard. It's not a place that I'm going to use it for parking 24/7. In case there's an emergency, I can park a car back there. So, it's not like kind of, if you look at our house, we put so much money on it to improve the side, the beauty of the house. We already have a gate that we put in place, like kind of that going to be like kind of closed if there is an issue. So, that's like kind of the reason.
So, where would the driveway be? Where you have the basketball court, or below there?
Yeah, that's what's going to be right on the basketball court, in case, that's going to be used as a, you know, yard for like kind of for us to do activities. We just need like kind of an open entrance if we have to have access in the backyard, so we can have access in the backyard.
Two spaces.
Correct.
Two spaces.
To correct, yes.
Two parks. But you also have an option to put it in the front on the left side of your house?
I can't, because it's only have, we already have like kind of two parking on the side of the house, which can park for two, available for two cars.
Two cars. But you have room on the left side.
No, I don't, the room is not permitted like kind of for me to park in and that side, because I already have a gas, like kind of that's a meter, a gas meter, so I cannot put it parking.
Oh, does it gas meter there? Okay.
Am I correct to say that you've already put in, you've already taken down the wall and constructed the gate without a permit?
Yeah, that was a mistake. All right, that was a mistake made, like kind of on my part, but that's the reason I applied for a permit, like kind of that I can do it like kind of normally the way I should be done it.
Well, the reason you're applying for the permit is they stopped you from doing any additional work, correct? They, the city put a cease and desist on you doing anything
Correct.
and coming in front of us.
Correct, yes.
Now, the elevation of your property, that, that seems like an incline going in there, so what's the elevation coming down if you, in, you'd have to put a pitched driveway in there to bring a car onto your property?
It's, you can do that. It's, it's not going to be complicated, as, you know, people said, it's very, going to be very-
Well, I'm asking you, I don't care what people said, I'm directing this to you.
It's not going to be an issue.
But what would be the pitch of a dry, of a, you going in there?
I'm going to have like kind of, I already talked to engineering, that's going to come and then do like kind of the, the work.
8%?
That's, that's what's required. He's proposing less than 5%.
So, the pitch would not be an issue at all? Anyone else wish to speak? The pitch of the driveway coming down, so it, it's, you can go up to 8% pitch, it's only 5%, so that's not an issue. The driveway would not be something that you could slide down. It's less than 5%. You can have up to 8% in the city.
The driveway's up here, the street's down here.
And if an 8%, you, you can do up to 8% pitch coming down. He's only going to do 5.
So, the city's going to be responsible if anyone, if anyone gets my kids when they're outside?
Can you hit the microphone?
So, the city will be responsible if something happens to my kids or anything property out on my house? If cars get, slide down the road, hit our house, her house?
If a car slides on the road now, what would you do? Coming down the road from driving?
I'm saying, when their cars going in and out of the driveway.
But you have other people with driveways there, sir, correct?
No, we don't.
There's no other driveway on that street?
Not on that hill when you come right down, not when you make the turn, sir. It's a blind turn.
Where would, where would you say that the first driveway is on Burbank Street?
It's about 75 feet down, maybe 80 feet, it's down. It's, it's at 40, I'm 48, so there, 43 Burbank's the first driveway, and it's not on her left-hand side, it's on the right-hand side of her house. So, it's down. Cars have time to see that driveway.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. What's the will of the members?
Press the button.
Where is your house adjacent to his, across the street? And how many parking spots do you have?
I have six, seven in the back.
In the back of your house?
Yeah.
And you have a driveway?
Yes. So, and, and the person across the street from my house, which is the corner of Burbank, also has a car in the rear.
In the rear. In the rear.
For probably eight cars. So, I, I understand where they come from, but what is, you see that for all these years?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I understand where, where they come from. Cause I have kids too. And my kids go back and forth up and down. I know during the wintertime what it takes to go down there, all the lack of salt, all of that. But I don't see, I, I think the biggest issue that is that stop sign in the corner. People don't respect. I mean, that stop sign been put in there for the last seven, eight years maybe. People just go by, they don't care, they just turn. I think it has nothing to do with the parking or have it or not, the dangers on that corner. And of course, it's a hill. It's gonna get slippery in the wintertime. That's a different shoe with the sea, with the city and with the town. I think it has nothing to do with the homeowners and what he's proposing to do there. I don't, I can't see that danger, especially, they are all the way down through the hill. Not up there. I mean, from his corner to that park, the hill is not that big, but.
I'm sorry, you can't speak from the back, you'd have to come up, so please, you can't speak from the audience.
So, what I can see is from that corner all the way down to the parking there. We're talking about probably thirty-five to forty feet total? That's enough time for you to stop in a corner, cause I have to respect the stop sign. See who is there, if someone's parking or not, yes, absolutely.
Sir, with all due respect, if you have an outburst, we have to ask you to leave the chamber, so please, thank you.
So, I understand both sides, but I don't find that excuse to go against that, cause I don't see anything that parking there or not. Cause if you don't park it all day long, I don't see that twenty-four-seven be a shoe for any other neighbors, not through my eyes. So, that's my opinion.
Okay, thank you. This is also a single-family home, correct?
Yes.
What's the will of the members? Please press the microphone.
I would like to look at it again, Michael. You know, I didn't know that there was issues that the gentleman brought up, but a visual, I think, would give me a better idea of what he's talking about.
Is there a motion to continue?
Yes.
Seconded by?
Yes.
Could we ask for a roll call?
Shall the ZBA continue the matter to the meeting of October twenty-sixth? Mr. Hamdan?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lemina?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, and Chairman Tucker?
Yes.
This application will be continued to the meeting of October twenty-sixth.
To the applicant, I would ask that you respectfully contact your ward counselor for the area so that he can set up some type of a, a meeting so that we can go up and view the site. Thank you.
Next application is A twenty-two twenty-six, Sergio Sorto, twenty-eight Proctor Ave. Seeking the following variances from the ZBA to enable the appellant to construct a two-hundred-and-fifty-two square-foot addition and reconstruct and extend the existing deck at the rear of the existing single-family dwelling at twenty-eight Proctor Ave.
Is there an applicant here?
Hi, good afternoon, my name is Mihail Shumansky, I'm an architect, representing Mr. Sortos. What my client is trying to do is update his house, renovate it, add a second-story addition, as well as a single-story addition off the back and reconstruct his existing decked. By reconstructing the deck, he also wants to enlarge it a little bit. And we, what we have is an existing non-conforming condition in regards to the side setbacks. The side setback on the left is, is minimal, we only need about another foot and a half of variance to be able to align the new addition with the side of the house. And the deck is also already within the setback, and we're not looking to push it any closer to the setback. We would stay within the, the line that it's at. We'll, we just wanna extend it towards the back as well, still keeping within the rear setback.
Okay, seeing that it's a public hearing, I will have to ask if there's any other proponents? Anyone in favor? Hearing, and then I'll close that side of the hearing, are there any opponents? Hearing, and then I'll close that side of the hearing. Who represents this area, Ashley? It's Anthony? Now, are you in, you're enclosing this deck, am I correct?
No, not the deck. We, we're doing a one-story addition right next to the deck, besides the deck.
And this is a single-family dwelling?
That is correct, yes.
So, there'll be no plumbing fixtures or anything in the addition?
Not in the addition, correct. Not in the addition, no plumbing.
No, the addition will not have any type of plumbing or anything?
No, it will not. It's, it's going to be a dining room.
Okay. Any members wish to speak?
Yeah. The structure behind the house, is that coming down, the garage?
No, the garage is staying.
So, you're building right along the side of the garage, is that what it is?
No, we're attaching right to the back of the house. So, right now, the existing deck runs full width of the house at the back, perpendicular. And we're sort of flipping the deck parallel to the house and putting the addition right next to it.
I hope I went to the right house. Is it a gray house?
It's, yes, it's, it's a grayish, bluish sort of color.
With the concrete garage in the back?
In the back, yes, but it's, it's a detached garage.
Detached garage.
Yeah, and, and the addition will not, if, if you're thinking that it might somehow interfere with the way you drive into the garage, it will not because the existing deck already has the footprint of what the addition will be. So, we already have to pass by the deck to get to the, to the garage. So, it's not, we're not making the, that, that trip from the driveway to the garage any.
I just can't visualize what you're saying. If you're gonna add an addition in the back, the garage, if I'm facing the house, the garage is on the left.
Correct.
Then you have a huge deck in the back, so that deck is coming down for the addition?
Yes, half of it.
Half, half of the deck?
Yes.
And the rest of the deck is gonna go past the garage?
The rest of the deck is on the right, it's on the right of the house, yeah, the plan would certainly help.
That's what I'm looking at.
The deck, the deck was like this now.
Yep. And there's the garage.
You are not gonna be putting any additional paving or anything, so the paved driveway that's there remains?
That's correct.
And the proposed deck is already that size? You're not extending that deck?
Well, we're shrinking it in, in the east-west direction and to sort of give back what we take out by the addition. We're, we wanna push that deck to the backyard further, so it's still gonna be about the same size that it currently is.
I'm confused on how they get into that garage. I went up there, but now I'm thinking, how do they get, so they're getting into the garage from?
From the driveway on, on the left. It's a straight shot from the street.
To be eight-point-nine inches. They start with nine-point-six?
Yeah.
And they ended up with eight-point-nine? If they, I think if they keep it to nine feet.
Eight-point, you, you couldn't have a driveway to get into the garage at eight-point-nine feet.
It's, that's what it is currently.
So, can you keep it to nine feet? Question is, can you make it to nine feet? If we push it back?
Push the, the addition back? Well, that's, that's the whole, that's the whole concept, that we'd like to keep it aligned with the house so that interior walls can be aligned as well.
The ten feet.
Yep. The variance is being requested are minimum side yard setback requirement of ten feet and minimum side yard setback of ten feet for decks.
I'm concerned on the, the, the actual width on getting into that. You're gonna now have a lot, a house, an addition right there, so you're not, you're not gonna have a deck or, this is a structure that's gonna be just eight-point-nine feet away from that. I would ask that we continue this so I can seek more, ask questions to site plan review. If they, I don't know if they have actually reviewed that for the driveway width going into that garage. That's my concern I have, if there's any other concerns that members have, you wish to speak?
I, I just can't picture, even though I look at it, I'm just not visualizing. An addition, what the, what the whole is that?
It's, the problem is here. We're not gonna have enough room for any, any fire.
Is there, my wish is to continue, is there a, a second on that?
Okay, let's continue.
So, we can seek more clarification on the, the actual addition and the driveway going to the garage?
Sure.
So, there's a motion to continue, seconded, could I ask for a roll call, please?
Shall the zoning board of appeals continue this matter to the meeting of October twenty-sixth? Is Mr. Hamdan?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lemina?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lopes? Yes, Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, and Chairman Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, this matter will be continued.
Okay, okay, and, and just, just last question. Is the, the concern that he will not be able to have, or will not have enough width to get his car through, or?
Maneuverability and having a structure that close.
And is that a zoning?
We're not sure of that, so that's what we're gonna ask the questions for.
Okay, all right.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And last application is A twenty-two twenty-seven, Oscar Escobar and Reina Escobar, fourteen Bellevue Ave, seeking a variance relative to detached accessory structures may only be erected within the rear yard to enable the appellant to construct a fifteen-by-eight-point-three-foot shed in the front yard at fourteen Bellevue Ave.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. My name is Nancy O'Neill, and I am an attorney at fourteen Proctor Avenue, Riviere. I am here on behalf of the applicants, Mr. Oscar Escobar and Mrs. Reina Escobar. We are requesting a variance tonight relative to the shed structure currently in place in the front yard of the fourteen Bellevue Ave property. The fourteen Bellevue Avenue property abuts onto the rail line running under the nearby Riviere Street and does not have rear yard space behind the house. The house is very close to the rear property line. For this reason, the applicants weren't able to build the shed in their rear yard and instead constructed the shed in their front yard. And accordingly, we are asking for a variance to allow the shed to remain in its current front yard position. The shed is otherwise compliant with zoning requirements. And the applicants are willing to take efforts so that the shed blends in with the surrounding neighborhood. To this extent, the applicants will install siding and paint the shed so that it matches the fourteen Bellevue Avenue residents and install a stockade fence in the front yard to shield the shed from view. And as the applicants here wish to take steps to minimize the impact of the shed on this neighborhood, believe the variance request is reasonable, and of course, I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing that this is a public hearing, I will ask if there's any proponents? Anyone in favor? Hearing and seeing, and then I'll close that side of hearing, are there any opponents? I know that the ward counselor voiced concern and was opposed. He did say that he was gonna go back down there and take a look. I did not hear from him again, that was just for the record. This property, if anybody viewed it, in fact, is right, the, the rear of the house is right back to the railroad, there's a fence and there's a hill. They've filled that hill in with all of the leaves and debris, so, but you could not put a shed in the back. I was concerned when I went there that the shed is on a footprint, I thought it was a slab, sitting on a slab. It is, it's on cinder blocks, there's crush rock in the middle, so that there is, it's pervious to take on water. And I believe it's ten feet high. I was concerned that it does not match the aesthetics of, of the home. The owner is now agreeable to side the shed and put a roof on it that will match the, the current home. As far as stockade, I believe that she said that she would put two car spaces and then nineteen feet back, put a fence, a six-foot fence. Everything else is vinyl on her property, so I'm not sure she'd wanna do a stockade, but as far as a six-foot fence, that would almost, you wouldn't be able to see it from the street. If you Google it, there is a fence in front that's been removed so she can pull the two front, the two vehicles onto the property. So, I don't think there's any other alternative but to have the shed on that side. The abut to the right where the shed is, is, has no issues with it. That's just for the record. Any questions from the members?
I was by there earlier, and it is a sight for sore eyes.
Yeah.
But knowing that they're gonna vinyl siding and put a fence up there, I can, I can agree with that.
We make it subject to site plan review, and do we make it known that we want it sided to match the house? Can we do that, Ashley? So, there's a motion to approve, subject to site plan review as well as the shed being aesthetically matching the home as far as siding and, or the roof. And then, that they would put a fence of, to comply with the city zoning, I believe it's six-foot fence, approximately nineteen foot back so that they can park the two vehicles on their property. Is there a motion to approve?
Yes.
Okay, I would ask for a roll call, please.
Shall the zoning board of appeals grant the variance requested, subject to site plan review approval? Further, that the siding must match and be aesthetically pleasing to match the home. And a six-foot fence shall be installed nineteen feet back from the, from the lot line running the street. Mr. Hamdan?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lemina?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, and Chairman Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, the variance has been approved.
A motion to adjourn, our next meeting will be October twenty-sixth at five P.M.